Good evening. It is July 22nd at 6 o'clock and I call this regularly scheduled Dunwoody City Council meeting to order unless there's an objection. Seeing none, the meeting is called to order. Councilwoman Harris, can you lead us in the invocation and the pledge?
If everyone would please rise. At this meeting, help us to make decisions which keep us faithful to our mission and reflect our values. Give us strength to hold to our purpose, wisdom to guide us, and a keen perception to lead us. And above all, keep us charitable as we deliberate. Please join me in the pledge allegiance.
Sergeant Seela.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Sergeant Anwar Seela with the Patrol Division. Just wanted to congratulate our 2024 Dunwoody Teen Police Academy students for completing the five-day summer program, which was held on July 8th through 12th of this month. The Teen Police Academy provides teenagers ages 14 to 19 with an inside look of local law enforcement operations and even some of the challenges that we face. We had 10 students that came through the program this year. They participated in several activities, including touring the police department, partaking in our virtual firearm simulator. They even took field trips to Chatcom 911, DeKalb County Jail, the GBI headquarters. And then this year, we also added a trip to DeKalb County Police Department Aerial Support Unit where they were able to tour and see a presentation from the police helicopter. So we had 10 students go through the academy this year. Many of them couldn't make it today just for planning for the schools. But I did want to ask Alex Nelson to come up, one of the students, to say a few words on his experience in the teen academy.
Good day, men and women of the Dunwoody City Council. I recently went through the Teen Police Academy and it was a really enlightening and great experience. And I feel like there's a lot of benefits it can have to the community and to the police department as well. First off, the Teen Police Academy helps the people see the different aspects of law enforcement and see inside of how it really works and so they can see the challenges and difficulties of it and make more informed opinions about law enforcement. And by seeing how law enforcement works from the inside, people who go through this academy also probably be more likely to be compliant because they see like how a DUI stop works and then they know, oh, even if I'm not driving drunk, just to go through it and see, like, yeah, okay. The Teen Police Academy also helps build relationships between the community and the police department because like your kids have gone to this academy and they really had a great time and you'll people will start to have a positive impression of the police department and the police officers, which is very good. It also inspires people to go into law enforcement and see law enforcement jobs they've never even seen. Like before I did this, I didn't know that there were K-9 officers or like the helicopter pilots. I didn't know any of that until I came here and now I'm actually considering a job as a helicopter pilot for the police department. They also run the Citizens Police Academy, which is a similar but more advanced thing for adults, which is very good. While I think our taxpayer money is a very precious resource that should be spent wisely and carefully, I think that funding the Teen Police Academy and Citizens Police Academy are very good investments of that money. Thank you and God bless you.
Thank you, Alex. Also, many of the students that participated in the academy have also had interest in our ongoing Public Safety Cadets Program. So we're going to continue to try to have a relationship with the kids, the teenagers that's in our community. So I'm going to ask a few of the ones that were able to make it today to come up and take a photo with us.
Come down.
Yes.
So for those of you who don't know, this is Sergeant Seela's project. He created it. He initiated it for our community a few years ago. And it gives young people an opportunity to learn about a career path that they may have otherwise no exposure to. But as the fantastic speaker said, it also just starts to bridge the relationship between the community and our public safety officials. For Sergeant Seela, he could do it for adults, like an adult day camp because they do all these really cool things, which we do in our Citizens Police Academy as well, but they see, they go to the jail. They work with our evidence techs. They simulate a pullover, I mean, yes, where Councilwoman Harris's daughter became viral on social media for her behavior years ago in a
Good way.
In a good way. In a good way. She was all over the internet. And but it's just a really good experience. So for those of you with teenagers in your life, encourage them to do it next year. I know sometimes it's hard to walk into a room and not know anybody. And when I'm there the first morning, they're always very quiet, but by the end of the week, they've bonded nicely and they've had some really cool experiences, like examining a pretend dead person for evidence and that kind of thing. So I can't recommend it enough, but mostly I'd like to give a big round of applause to thank Sergeant Seela for putting this on and making this possible. Thank you, sir. And for this and frankly, for everything you do for our community as well as your colleagues. So thank you. And to the young people, remember what I said at graduation. When you're, I'm not quite sure we'll have a helicopter anytime soon. But when you're ready to choose, if you choose a career in law enforcement, we are the agency you want to serve with. So just keep that in mind as you pursue your career goals as you move towards adulthood. Thank you. Public comments. I have two cards. We have each speaker will get three minutes and then 30-minute limit and then another section of public comment at the end of the meeting, if anyone is still here. Peter Yost. If you'll approach the microphone, make sure the green light is on. I'm not sure who's doing that today because
Green light is on.
Okay, three minutes. Go right ahead. Introduce yourself and begin speaking.
Great, thank you. My name is Peter Yost. I've lived in Dunwoody for 36 years, all of those in the Four Oaks neighborhood off Peeler Road. I see some looks on some of your faces. I want to come here tonight and talk with you about the PATH Project, another one of our favorite projects, but I want to talk in support of this project. In particular, I want to suggest that we add to our messaging when we talk about the PATH Project, that we talk about it in in terms of including Dunwoody in the bigger picture. I'm using myself as a sample of one, which I try not to do. But I don't hear a lot of talk about how this path in Dunwoody is a part of the Atlanta-wide project and what that would do for our community to be a part of this bigger project. Too often, I think we tend to focus on just the part that's near us, the thing that's in our backyard or right by our neighborhood. This is not about a wide sidewalk down Peeler Road. This is about Dunwoody participating in a citywide infrastructure project that is greatly needed, that will help business and will help recreation and it will help us come together as a community. So I want to make sure that the community hears this and that this makes it to the record that some of us see this project in much bigger terms and with much more greater forethought. This is not about me and my future in the Four Oaks neighborhood. This is about the city of Dunwoody and the next generation and the generation after that having access to surrounding communities and even into the city to take advantage of everything that our great city has to offer. And so I'd like to suggest that we include that in our messaging when we together continue to talk about the PATH. And lastly, before my time runs out, I want to thank you all. Over the last, geez, it's really been about two years. You all, particularly our local representative, Tom Lambert, has been just very, very good about communicating, taking our questions, meeting with us. How many times have you been to our neighborhood, talking with us, trying to understand what our concerns were, really almost to a fault? I think you have engaged with us to a great degree to make sure that this project, when it happens, is going to be best for the community and a reflection of who we are and what we want our neighborhood to be as well. So thank you all for engaging with us as a community and we look forward to participating with you more to make sure this project is going to be the best that it possibly can be. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Perfect timing. Bob Facella, please approach the microphone and introduce yourself.
Good evening, everyone. Bob Facella, Dunwoody Homeowners Association. I don't want to talk about the PATHs. I was going to talk about the Agenda Item 6 in the second read, but thanks to Richard and Paul, I got some clarification on that. So while I'm here, I just wanted to thank the city for helping us out with the best parade that Dunwoody has ever had. We really appreciate the city stepping up. I was I was hoping the chief would be here tonight, but there was, the police department was outstanding, best ever, as I told the chief personally. He's one of the best two police chiefs we've ever had. And tell him I said that. And I want to thank Eric and Jay Benicki and Chris Murphy for helping us out. Really appreciate it. Thanks, guys.
And I think we had 48 members of the police, does that sound right, Sergeant Seela? Forty-eight members of our police department on site during the parade. And that's impressive. So thank you. I have no other public comment cards. As I said at the beginning, there'll be another section of public comment at the end of the meeting. Michael Starling, you are up next.
All right. Thank you, Mayor and Council. So I'm here for the second quarter economic development update. A number of you have mentioned maybe I need to come up with a better name for this update. So I'll work with Jennifer and get a snazzier name for it. A quick update on activities. We held 34 recruitment meetings, 58 retention meetings, and 146 touchpoints. To give you a little bit of color, you know, we spend a lot of time working with or trying to work with our existing businesses. That's probably the most important thing an economic development organization could do. It's the first thing that most organizations don't do because it's time-consuming. We do a really good job of meeting with our smaller companies, especially our restaurants. We do have a need to get into more of our corporations. So it is a constant struggle for us and a constant work. So I do think the recent announcement of the combined chambers of commerce could help with that. Add a bigger platform, more opportunities to meet with businesses. And we always work on ideas about how we bring people together so we can more easily meet them. We're having a meeting at Ravinia. I think all of you have been invited and that's another opportunity. The Ravinia Association, all three buildings over there, they bring their employers, employees together on a regular basis. So we're just going to join them and meet and greet and hopefully meet some companies and do that. We have two ribbon cuttings. We do think we're going to have significantly more ribbon cuttings in the future. A lot of High Street is coming online very soon. And Nando, I think, is next. Putt Shack, I think, is in September and there's a whole bunch more. So we're going to get much busier with that. And we did 17 public art approvals, which we'll talk about in just a moment. We continue to implement our entrepreneur and innovation strategy. The Access Georgia Foundation Partnership, which we're launching on Thursday night, is part of that effort. Access was part of Thai Atlanta, and most of you should be familiar with Thai. We've been partnering with them for many years to do networking events and workshops. Access has created a new nonprofit and we are working with them to provide quarterly workshops for small businesses and entrepreneurs. I use those two terms interchangeably. Some people think they might not be, but we look at them as the same. If you run a small business, you are an entrepreneur. So they're going to do quarterly workshops. They're going to have networking sessions through the year. We're also going to have mentoring sessions. That's what Access was created to do, is to provide mentoring to a small group of businesses every year that they that apply to this program. They go through a mentoring session and then they end up doing a pitch competition. In four years, they've funded 14 companies with over $2 million. They will continue to do that and they continue to do that in Dunwoody. So it is, we hope, the sort of the beginnings of an accelerator program for the city of Dunwoody. We're partnering with that program with the Perimeter Chamber. And we certainly hope as the two chambers move along in their new form, that we will continue to work with them as well. Ed City Community Forums, Ed City 2.0, when we created that program, we always thought of it as a beginning and not the end. And so we've got two scheduled this year forums. We have at least two more next year and hopefully four. And these are to continue the conversation, to continue to bring people together around the ideas that we talked about in Ed City 2.0. On August 22nd, Ellen Dunham Jones will be the guest speaker. Kick us off and she will talk about sort of suburban growth and development in general. In November, we're going to have our second and that will be, we'll talk about housing and I'm working with Richard and his team to identify speakers for that one. So we think it's a good time with the comp plan. I know you're going to talk a little bit about that. Some of these conversations, hopefully, will feed right into what the comp plan is talking about. The mayor got to cut a ribbon with the governor not that long ago over at Campus 244. Transportation Insight finalized their lease for 174,000 square feet. They, Transportation Insight, they have one floor completely occupied and they will slowly occupy the second floor over time. We also had another company, Swiss Log, sort of a strange name, but this company, they create the hardware and software for autonomous warehouses. So you can imagine these million-square-foot warehouses, they actually create the robots and the systems that operate those. They hired a new CEO. That CEO was from Atlanta and he wanted the headquarters to be here. So they're moving from Virginia this year and taking 26,000 square feet at terraces. This was in April, so we go way back, but we held the AAPI Heritage Celebration. It's become an annual celebration over at Ashford Lane. We also celebrated a ribbon cutting of a new mural at Park Place. They did a ribbon cutting to sort of finalize their improvements in their courtyard and they included a large mural done by a Savannah-based artist. And this is the storefront art. So 16 of those art pieces were student art. Those, I think this week or next week, will be coming out of the storefronts. And some of them will be used to wrap the traffic signal boxes. I think we've got six, maybe eight. So we will be doing that later this fall when it gets a little cooler.
And some are going to the mall.
Eventually, a lot of them will go to the mall. You know, Rosemary worked out a deal with Perimeter Mall, so the doorway next to Maggiano's, if you go in there between Maggiano's and Macy's, that entire wall, one wall is full of the storefront art. They actually take the physical pieces, put them behind plexiglass, put the names on them. It's really nice. And so we we hope to do that every year with this program. Every quarter, we talk about a specific industry and this time is office. We got 10.1 million square feet of office space in Dunwoody. There's about 36 million square feet of office space in the perimeter market as a whole. So that includes Sandy Springs and parts of Brookhaven. We are down to just below 24% vacancy. That's down from like 29%. It is still elevated to where we want it to be. The entire region is struggling with vacancies and we'll talk a little bit about those on the next slide. We have 30% availability, which, so the difference between those two availability is space that actually isn't being occupied. There may be a lease on it, so a company might be paying the owner of the building leased, but there's no one in it. And it's, so it still impacts the market as a whole. That is also down about 5% or 6% over the past couple of years. A lot of these subleases are being taken up. There's a 50,000-square-foot lease at Ravinia that should be announced pretty soon. So slowly but surely companies are making decisions and they're taking more and more space. And as a reminder, the office represents 25% of our overall commercial valuation. To share just a little bit more, so perimeter as a whole has almost 37 million square feet of office. We have 22.8% vacancy and 29.7% availability rate in that market. So we track pretty closely with the rest of perimeter. Some of the trends we're seeing. Vacancies are trending down, not as fast as we'd like to see them. We have had quite a few fairly large leases, some of them in Sandy Springs and Brookhaven, but that's great because it reduces the amount in perimeter as a whole and it positions our our properties better. And really, the issue we're dealing with and a number of you have been part of these conversations is what are we going to do with those properties that are no longer going to be office? What happens to the buildings as well as the property? And that's really, I think, over the next 18 months to two years, what we're going to be focused on. And a lot of that is with the, just the age of our office buildings. We have a lot, you know, over 60% of our office buildings are from the 80s or the 70s and those are the buildings that are most in a bad situation. Some of them, like the terraces, were built in the 80s and they're doing fine. They're surrounded by amenities. They're close to the core. But others that are not as well-positioned, that are a little further on the periphery, are really struggling with how do they, well, most of them are either sending them back to the bank or just throwing up their hands and saying, there's there's nothing we can do with these office buildings to position them for future office use. So we have to find another use. The good news is we have Ed City 2.0, which gives us at least a big vision. And as the consultants work through the comp plan and the updated zoning code, I think this is one of those issues that needs to be top of mind for all of us. Focus specifically on Georgetown. Georgetown is our second-largest commercial area. It's got about 50,000 square feet more commercial space than Dunwoody Village. And we have, the retail market in Georgetown has always done quite well. We do have a few vacancies right now. The Taqueria is vacant and depending on how they look at vacancies, the the future wine store is probably showing up as a vacancy as well. As you see, office space in Georgetown is performing much better than in other places. We took out a lot of the Class B and C office space 10 years ago or so when they were torn down and replaced with townhomes. So office space in Georgetown is at a premium. I know there was some conversation during the comp plan talking about maybe we should should pay for other sub-market studies. These studies are a little old, but we do have master plans for Georgetown. It goes back to the very first LCI done in 2011 and then the update in 2016. It is interesting looking at this, almost all of the primary and secondary opportunities that this master plan identified have actually been redeveloped. There's probably been no area of Dunwoody that's changed more than perimeter than Georgetown. It actually a great deal of these properties have changed hands. So Project Renaissance, obviously the 35 acres of that. We had two townhome projects which replaced older office buildings. The Gateway Project, really the two opportunities left in Georgetown are the school site and the large office building, Dunwoody Park. We understand the school board owns the school site, of course. The office park has a new owner. Third and Urban recently purchased it. We've met with them many times. They are very happy to keep it as an office project. They bought it to be an office project. But they certainly have visions for future redevelopment. They think they could create a really interesting place here, but there's high demand, so their rents continue to go up. So it was a good investment for them for, just to give it as office. But I would not be surprised if we see them carve out bits and pieces of that property over time and come in for redevelopment. And that's it for the update. Any questions?
Questions, anybody? Catherine.
Thank you, Michael. You gave us the office vacancy rate for the perimeter area. What is Metro Atlanta running?
I would have to look at that. I didn't look that up before I came down, but I can email that to you.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. It's probably going to be a little higher than us because it includes downtown and downtown is really, really struggling. But yeah, I'll get that to you.
Stacy, did you have your hand up? John.
Thank you, Michael, for the report. Earlier today, I forwarded you the CBRN status report. I had some questions out and it shows a breakdown for central perimeter, which was a little bit higher than the numbers you were reporting. But I think you're explaining to us based on looking at the report, number one, the report was a little old. And the report also for central perimeter includes Sandy Springs, which might have higher or lower, I don't know, includes Georgetown or the the other cities.
Yeah, the, well, it includes all of Sandy, most of Sandy Springs and parts of Brookhaven.
Right.
The perimeter market is extremely large. The core is what we think about around the mall and over on 400 and just inside 285, but it includes a massive area outside of those.
And we're doing better than the overall numbers is what it looks like.
Slightly, slightly better. And some of our properties, we know, like the two buildings at High Street. AJC used to be in one. Those buildings are never going to be office buildings anymore, but they show up as being vacant. So we, you know, I could probably do a look at some of the buildings that we think are not going to be office building and come up with a new number. We're doing slightly better than perimeter as a whole, but we're both struggling with above average.
We also have, tell me about the building in perimeter center east. I mean, that's a huge building. Is that completely vacant?
It is.
And what's that number? Because that's a big chunk, right?
It's about 600,000 square feet out of the two buildings. So until December 31st, they had a lease on it by State Farm that rolled over. They have a fairly new owner who bought a big chunk of office buildings from a a big investment company. And they own those and they own some over in Cumberland and they specialize in suburban office. So they knew what they were getting into or had an idea. They are looking right now what they do. They're probably going to invest money in the the taller building, the newer building that was built, I think, in the late 80s. The second smaller office building that was actually built in 1971, it was the first office building built here. There's a question on whether they do anything with that.
What about the building, State Farm Building 1, the one right next to Marta that was supposedly leased but then backed out by
So that would not, I don't believe, show up on either. It's certainly not vacant. But I don't think it's available because they're not trying to lease it. The last time we talked to them, they are using it for overflow, so they're bringing their people back over time. They use it for training and then they use it for overflow days. So they're using that building.
I just remember Carvana was part of the discussion and now Carvana is long gone, so I'm not sure what was happening there.
Yeah, so they're still using it and for what they've told us, they have no interest in subletting it. Now, if somebody showed up and said, "We want to lease the whole building," that might happen, but it's a 600,000-square-foot building, so that's a lot of space. And Carvana was only taking, I think, 200,000 square feet of that anyway.
And then the final thing, you mentioned the future wine. I want to make sure that in Georgetown, nobody thinks it's Vino Venue.
No.
There's a new facility on Shellford that's being built.
Yes, yes. It's under construction. It's been under construction for quite some time. It used to be a Rite Aid, I think, or
Sounds right.
And it's done now. At least it's enclosed and they're moving forward. But no, it's not Vino Venue. It's a wine package store.
Thank you. Just want to make sure that we clarify that. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Michael. I wanted to I wanted to add a little bit, if that's okay.
Absolutely.
So I'm part of a lot of conversations. Rosemary Watts, who is our economic, she works with Michael in economic development. She works hard to get me into buildings to meet with the owners or the landlords or the property management company. And then working with them, we try to get into different offices. And recently I was at Crown, the one by Hampton Inn. Not Crown.
Sterling Point.
Yeah, Sterling Point, thank you. And met with several CEOs of companies that had moved their offices from Johns Creek. Just coincidentally, it was a coincidence that they came from the same place to Dunwoody. And they shared all the reasons, which includes location to ta- a great location, access to talent, transit to some extent, but they're over here. They're not right by the Marta station. And the amenities and they love the way our community looks. They love the way their office building sits. And then, as Michael mentioned, I had the opportunity to cut the ribbon at campus. Well, it was for transportation insight. It wasn't really for campus two four four. And in that day, on that morning, I had lots of conversations with the employees. This is a company that I can't exactly tell you what they do, but it's like a brokerage for shipping freight. It's, you know, you have the buyers and the sellers, essentially the shippers and the vehicles that ship it. Or the shippers of the vehicle in the in the suppliers who need to get their goods to where they need to go. And listening, multiple people, they move, they combined six Metro Atlanta offices to Dunwoody. And several of the leadership of the company came up to tell me that they had moved from other places into Dunwoody. And then the young employees who don't, they'd only started a few weeks ago, but they're thrilled that they're going to have all these amenities to walk to. They've already walked to places to eat and they're thrilled that all the stuff is coming to High Street. There will be a few restaurants at campus two four four when all is said and done. And of course, the hotel, but they were very excited about being here. Additionally, some of the executives who live in other places appreciate the connector that we built a few years ago with Sandy Springs. It makes their commute, they hop off Peachtree Dunwoody or off four hundred and they can be at their office building very quickly. And they're very big on Dunwoody and perimeter, and I'm very big on Dunwoody and perimeter too. But I'm mostly positive. I think the key thing is is that the struggle we face is the age of some of our office buildings and also the getting people back in the office so that the demand for just their existing office space speaks for itself. So I'm big on Dunwoody.
Yeah, no, it things are going very well. The office market, as we've talked to people, even even the the office buildings who are unfortunately facing foreclosure or soon, they would tell you the office market has picked up. I mean, people are making decisions or there's some big projects in the region.
Right.
You know, one of the issues is we're 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 just competing with a lot of other people with the same type of space. But we do have with High Street, campus two forty four, Ravinia and terraces, we have well-positioned. So what what we're facing is a bifurcated market with that sort of haves and have nots, right? There there are some buildings that are going to do extremely well and then some that are just going to struggle. Although we have found that the office buildings that have focused on sort of local serving. So your your local medical, doctor, accounting, they have done very well and continue to do very well. But if you're trying to recruit a Fortune five hundred or a some office of of a big company, they have, you know, all of these buildings to choose from. And if you have a building that's not around amenities, you can't walk to restaurants, you can't even compete on price, so.
Yeah. And Swiss Log, just because I it it's not just that they're moved their company here, they're putting their headquarters, their Americas. So like for North and South America, Central America, headquarters here in Dunwoody.
And they're and and they're growing pretty rapidly. I'm not sure what all those people do. I'm sure there's a lot of engineers and salespeople, but it's a very interesting company. We are finding that logistics is sort of, but we've we've become sort of a hub since Hapig Lloyd moved here. Transportation Insight, we've got a number of smaller companies that have relocated here. And they're all coming for the talent because if you've got a big employer here like Hapig Lloyd, a smaller company can come and poach a couple of their employees very easy and that's their HR department, so.
Right, and they have job. Swiss Log has local jobs posted now. So if you're looking in one of those fields that we don't know exactly understand what they do, there are jobs available. So thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
The next item on the agenda is a public hearing, comprehensive plan kickoff, public hearing and code rewrite, Richard McLeod.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We're here to have a public hearing on the kickoff of our comprehensive plan and also the code rewrite. You all had given us the ability to rewrite our tremendously antiquated code. It was a nineteen sixties code. But the comprehensive plan is a roadmap for a long range policy direction. We use it to guide decisions about land use, transportation, economic development, housing and infrastructure. This is an important part of our continued evolution as a young and growing city. It's the beginning of a ten year update to our comprehensive plan. The last one we did was a five year update. We updated every five years, but this is the tenth year. So we knew did a whole new one instead of revising it. The update coordinates the assessment of new demographic and economic data and trends. It considers the current version of the comprehensive plan and makes amendments based on community input. We have a Allison Stewart Harris with TSW, who you all awarded the contract to, is here. She's got a short PowerPoint presentation. So Allison.
Great, thank you, Richard. Good evening. It's a pleasure to be here tonight to officially kick off your comprehensive plan and UDO update. Like Richard mentioned, I have a very brief presentation. It's five minutes in and out. We'll get you onto your next agenda item. Want to introduce our project team on the city side. Richard and his staff will be leading this process. On the consulting side, we've got a really fabulous group of folks working with us. Like Richard mentioned, my name is Allison Stewart Harris. I work for Tenell Spangler Walsh. We are a small company based down in Midtown. We've been around for about thirty years. We do planning, landscape, architecture and architecture. Few familiar faces probably for you on our consultant team. Some of you probably know Caleb Brassico. He's our principal in charge. He's done some work up here. See some smiles, that's always good. Also, Eric Bosman from Kimley Horn is joining us as well. And I'm really excited because we have brought in some of the best code experts in the country from Code Studio to really help untangle a lot of these code issues and make sure that we are leaving you with a very functional, great code moving forward. So like Richard mentioned, this is both your comprehensive plan and your UDO update. We'll be starting with your comprehensive plan. Like Richard mentioned, y'all did it five years ago. So if you feel like we just did that, you kind of did, but this is the big update. This is something that is required by the state of Georgia. You must actually update it every five years in order to maintain your quality, local government status or qualified local government status. Excuse me. The comprehensive plan, it can be a little confusing, but it's really important to note that this is not regulatory. This is a very high level kind of twenty year outlook on your growth and improvements in Dunwoody. So it's a lot of policy. We'll be looking at land use, housing, transportation, economic development, sustainability. And there's one other that I'm missing right now. But again, this is the long term vision for growth. We have that twenty year time horizon, but we'll really be focused on actions for the next five years. What's really exciting, though, for us as your consultant team is to be able to do this with your UDO. So the comp plan is not regulatory, but your UDO is. The comp plan is really how the the UDO is really how you implement the comprehensive plan. So it's going to be combining all of your development related regulations into a single place. We're really going to streamline and simplify your process and make it easier for everybody to understand. We know the UDO is a really huge priority for the city to get that done. We're going to start by assessing your existing codes, both from a technical perspective and then looking at the the new policies that will be coming out of your comprehensive plan. We're going to remove a lot of those conflicts and inconsistencies. When you have a code, it's sort of like a sort of like you have a closet and over time you keep stuffing things in there and it gets really disorganized and you can't find everything that you need. We're basically going to clean out that closet and reorganize it. Again, it's going to be a very modern, user-friendly document, and this is what is going to implement your comprehensive plan. So it's really exciting to do these both together. It's actually pretty rare for a community to do both of these at the same time, but it is a fantastic thing. So kudos to all of you for approving this process. It's a very efficient use of the community's funds. It's a very efficient use of the process. You're not bogging down folks in twenty different meetings. It's a really great way to do things. This process, it's going to take about two years. We'll be starting with the comprehensive plan. The state has a deadline for you all of October thirty first, twenty twenty five, but we are shooting for an adoption date around this time next year. You can see that the comprehensive plan starts a little bit first. That will be the most public facing part of the plan at first, but we will start to do some of the foundational code tasks in the background. We'll be looking at the code pretty intensely once we are in that adoption phase of the comprehensive plan and then focused on that through twenty twenty six. Do you want to zero in on engagement a little bit? I know this is a very important topic for you all. We have a lot of different engagement plans. We have a steering committee. We're going to have nine different steering committee meetings. We have one steering committee for both of these processes. So that same group of folks is going to be with us throughout the entire two years. We have, let's see, two pop up events, two public workshops, two open houses. We'll be doing a survey. We're probably going to work with Michael on coordinating on the Edge City forums, really making sure that all of your different processes are singing together. We know the engagement is very important here. We are going to really shoot to have a very diverse, accessible, open and creative process. If you're really interested in those details, we have about a ten, twelve page document that really dives into that. So I would encourage y'all to either reach out to me or Richard, and we're happy to to send that over to you. Some of the upcoming engagement opportunities, we do have our project website live. And that will be and we'll have our online survey launching in a couple of weeks. We will have a pop up event and a public workshop in August and September. And we encourage folks to stay engaged on the city's website. We have our first steering committee meeting on July thirtieth next week. And then in the background, we are already starting to advance your community assessment and your community agenda. And then again, in the background, we'll start to really dig into the code and start looking at those inconsistencies and identifying those areas we really want to make sure to shore up. So with that, I'm happy to answer any initial questions that y'all might have.
We don't do questions yet first. I don't think we have to do. I have to open the public hearing, correct, Sharon? Okay, so unless there's an objection, I hereby open this public hearing, seeing no objection. If there are people that would like to spit speak against us, I guess this is how I say it, right? Against us conducting the comprehensive plan and code rewrite, please approach the microphone. We'll have ten minutes for people wanting to speak against. This is strange. If there are people who would like to you're to speak against the comprehensive plan rewrite?
Well, not the comprehensive plan, just an aspect of it. Of the code change.
Okay. Oh, no, that's now. It's ten minutes against now.
Basically, my name is Judge Miller Hofer. I'm the neighborhood watch chair for Dunwoody North. And this is in regards to changing the zoning code to allow for another drug rehab facility in our vicinity. The corner of Tillie Mill and North Peachtree.
Okay.
I was sent a map from one of the council members and it indicated that we already have seven drug rehab facilities.
Ms. Hofer, I'm going to interrupt you just because that isn't relevant to this is the two year project to rewrite the code.
I said, it was only one aspect.
Oh, no, 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 but that that's an agenda item later. But you can take another minute and finish because there's no public hearing on that and there's no one else that wants to speak.
Basically, it turns out that four of the seven facilities in Dunwoody are already in this area. One of which is Peachford Hospital, which is a two hundred and forty six bed facility. They're now proposing to change the former assisted living facility, which is a thirty bed, which would give us ninety five percent of the drug rehab beds in our vicinity. It's sixteen hundred feet from the entrance to the middle school. Just down the road is an elementary school. It's three churches, Jewish Community Center, everything. And the park is directly across the street. It's a particularly poor location, unlike Peachford Hospital, which is way up on a hill and virtually invisible from the street. This is right there. And we would prefer that this not be done.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. All right, is there anyone who would like to speak against the comprehensive plan rewrite? Is there anyone who would like to speak for updating the comprehensive plan and code? I see no one, so I hereby close the public hearing unless there's an objection. I see no objection. Now we can ask questions. Rob.
So I I was just, you mentioned there's a twelve page document talking about public outreach, but I was wondering if you could maybe just spend a minute kind of extrapolate on that a little bit? Just because I think we'll get pretty good participation just looking at, you know, for example, the village, some of the parks, master plans. I think the citizens are interested and if we have good meetings at good times and good locations that are well run, you'll get a lot of good input. So just for the the sake of the people here and the people that might you know, listen to these minutes, just let them know kind of what's coming and where they might get a chance to jump in.
Sure, absolutely. So in terms of what's coming, the the soonest that folks can start to participate is we will have an online survey going up in a couple of weeks. We will be looking to the steering committee to help us craft that. And I do want to note that that will be building off of the community survey that y'all already do, so it won't be replicating the same questions. And all that information will be up on the project website. We are planning to do a pop up of it. And what that means is we'll just go to some somewhere like Ashford Lane. We'll do, we'll go to a festival they already have planned. We'll have a booth, we'll engage folks who are already there with their families. And then we will have a public workshop to kick off the process formally with the public in about a month or so. So that's what's coming up next. In terms of that, that broader community engagement document, it really goes into the details about each of these types of engagements, how we're going to advertise them. What I really like about this plan in particular is that we've zeroed in on groups that have historically been a little harder to read and harder to get to participate in some plans. And we've created some specific strategies for reaching those groups. So for example, you know, folks who maybe are commuting in and out of Dunwoody, but they don't live here. How do we talk to the workers better? Folks who maybe live in some of the apartments, young families who maybe, you know, they're busy at seven at night. They're they they got to put their kids to bed. They're not coming to that typical workshop. So we've got a lot of strategies specific to really reaching those specific groups and getting them involved with the process as well.
Joe.
So let's on that engagement timeline, where is the city council part of that? Where where does that lie? Where's the city council hooks into the the feet? Where are we in that?
So there there's a couple of areas for you all. We will be doing our stakeholder interviews in the next month or two. So each of you will be reached out to to schedule a one-on-one interview with the consultant team. I don't believe we have any interim presentations scheduled to y'all. We can talk to Richard about coming in midway, if that would be helpful. But when you go back and look at our main timeline here, we would be coming back for adoption in about probably in front of council, April, May-ish of next year.
So like my day job, I'm a project manager at Centure, right? So if you came to me and said, we got a twenty four month project and we'll talk to you in month twenty three and show you everything we've done. It would be great to have, because it's such a deep, the breadth and depth of the change that you're about to do. I know the the procurement has been done and the contract's been signed. And the liberals are already set in stone, but I would appreciate somehow or another that we could have some kind of mid-process check ins on consumable, smaller subsets of things to say, hey, we we finished this part. And I'm not sure exactly how you're approaching all the work. If you're doing it linear or it's just blah, 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 right? But just kind of think about that, how we could kind of, hey, guys, here's subject X or Y and Z. Let's give you a little mid-process update or feedback check in.
Yep, sure. Happy to work with Richard on setting that up.
John.
Thank you for the presentation. Can you tell me a little bit more about the the committee that's we're helping with you, the community?
Steering committee?
The steering committee. Tell me about that.
Okay, so the steering committee is a requirement that the state has for all comprehensive plans. It's typically a group of ten to fifteen folks that are a broad sort of range of people from the different community members. So from a rules standpoint, you need one elected official and you need one representative from economic development, but the rest is really up to the community to create. So we've worked with the community development department to develop a list of those folks to to sit on that steering committee. It's a little It's a little trickier when we're doing it, both the comp plan and the U D O. The U D O is so technical, and we're having one committee for both, that we really want to make sure that the folks that are on this, this committee are users of that U D O. Maybe not everybody, but a lot of folks who are really familiar with that and can give us that detailed, granular feedback that we're looking for. So it's a little less of a general population than you might have in some steering committees for a comprehensive plan, and a little bit more based on sort of city staff, folks who are going through that development process very frequently here.
Will those meetings be published, and will they be open to the public?
They are not intended to be, so for a couple of reasons. Steering committee meetings are very helpful for us as the consultant team to get, you know, very candid feedback on things. We're also showing draft materials. Sometimes what happens, if you show a draft, you've got public folks saying, oh, my gosh, this is what's gonna happen, and then it goes out on social media, and people get upset, but it's really still just a draft form. So we've found it better to have the steering committee meetings just be an internal process, so that what's getting shown to the public is a little more baked and, you know, rubber stamped by that steering committee before it goes out.
But as a member of the elected committee that sits on this body, are we excluded from attending?
No. I think it would just, we would need to talk to your city attorney about any sort of laws about advertising if we have more than one.
I just want to make sure that the members of this committee are invited to attend if so inclined to do so.
Yep, we would just need to work with your city attorney and make sure that we are advertising as necessary.
Great, thank you.
And, and there's a difference between listening and participating, and, okay, just making sure that everyone knows that.
Mayor, I want to make sure we get this right, and I'm not gonna say all what I would say on the record, but if you have quorum present. So let's first start with, is this committee, which is not established by this governing body, is established by staff? It's not subject to O M A under the Act itself. But when you have a quorum of council members and mayors observing an activity, which would include policy, public ma, uh, I'm gonna read the list, official business policy, uh, public policies formulated, presented, discussed, it doesn't matter if you're observing. If you're in quorum, that's gotta be addressed through the Open Meetings Act some kind of way.
We can make sure that doesn't happen. We'll put some internal checks and balances in that. I think we can make it work, but thank you. Anybody else? Because I do. So I, Richard, it's really for Richard. There's not enough touch points on this for public input. I don't know if anybody on council agrees with me, but two pop-ups for a two-year project, two open houses. I guess the one in April twenty-five is meant to be before we vote on it. Public meetings don't, I mean, they're, assuming you mean a traditional six or seven o'clock weeknight meeting, it's the same people that come. We don't need six of the same meetings unless it's meant to be the same people. You don't, I mean, I know there's a document and I can read it, but you, this isn't gonna, I mean, I stressed this during the bidding process, that we have to do different and we have to do better. Given the technical advisors you have on this project, you're gonna need ample opportunities for the regular citizens to provide input. And so come back to me with something different, please, or something more, with more touch points in the community. We're, I, I'm obviously very proud of Dunwoody. I think we have a lot going on. We are a different kind of suburban community than almost anywhere else in metro Atlanta. I'll be glad to talk to you about it, but we have a long history of advocacy, effective and not always so effective, but of being able to advocate for ourselves. Long before we were a city, we have a strong, strong commitment or involvement from our neighborhoods, and we just function differently than a lot of other communities that you might say compare us to. So I'd like to see this rethought. I understand that, you know, sometimes we have great success with a one o'clock Saturday meeting, for example, when we did the village plan. And then when we tried for some rewrite at one o'clock on a Saturday that we hosted at Dunwoody Baptist, no one came. But we have to be transparent, and we have to give people the opportunity to learn with us, right? Some of these code changes are gonna feel, I suspect, very dramatic to people. But if all we do is we put them out there, or they read about them in the crier or the reporter, without the opportunity to interact with us and ask questions, we're setting ourselves up for disappointment when we go to vote on things. So my advice, must, Eric, my advice is to come back to us with something more intensive in terms of touch points. So I appreciate that. Thank you. Anybody else? Thank you. Okay. And are we, do we have to vote on something with this, or this is just a public, it's just the law says you have a public hearing? Okay. Thank you. Sharon, you ready? I can do the consenting, yeah, I can do the consent agenda. It's the consent agenda. Is, move to pretty, wait a second, hold on one second. Is Daniel here by any chance? Okay, he's a student from Dunwoody High School who's gonna be joining our Sustainability Commission. He could be behind a post, but I don't see him. So no one's, no one on council's nodding their head that he's here. All right, we had a motion on the floor that has been seconded. Any discussion on consent? I need a mo, we have a motion. All in favor? Any opposed? Sharon, that passes unanimously.
Mayor, the next item moving to business items is a second read of an ordinance to define community, community residences and recovery communities and create use regulations for such uses. This is in chapter twenty-seven of the city code, Paul Leonhardt.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. This is a second read to this text amendment. So I'll give an abbreviated version of the presentation focusing on two items. First, a summary of the background and the purpose of this. And second, a summary of the changes that have occurred since the first read. Overall, we're doing this now, we're proposing this now because we've identified a gap in our code. Substance use disorder treatment is referenced in the code, but it's not included in the use table, so it leaves an opening. It's something that's anticipated by the code, but it's not, it's not properly implemented. To close that gap, we're proposing regulations here, and we have a twofold goal here that we're trying to balance. Number one is access to treatment, and number two is we do not wish to overwhelm the city's neighborhoods. We're trying to make it or spread it out across, across the city. And as part of this, we're implementing recent changes in state law that, that the state has passed and proposing to incorporate them in this text amendment. Overall background, federal law has changed over the past couple of years, where generally people with substance addiction issues are, and who are undergoing supervised rehabilitation are considered protected class under federal law, and that's the same class that people with other disabilities are falling under, so people with mental health or physical disabilities. And currently, our code anticipates some of these arrangements, but has different rules for different types of people. And we're proposing a, a different solution, but we're splitting it based on land use impacts, where we're having smaller-scale forms of housing for handicapped residents on the one side. We're proposing to name those community residences and proposing a land use for those types of facilities. On the other hand, larger facilities for mental health and substance use disorder that are more similar, that are not supposed to be a home, but that are more similar to a nursing home or like an institutional facility, proposing to regulate them under recovery community. And because they're different by land use, proposing different types of permitting processes. For instance, recover communities, so the larger-type facilities are not allowed in single-family districts. The smaller community residences can go into single-family districts with a special land use permit. Then both types of facilities would be allowed in multifamily residential districts and commercial districts, including the perimeter center, as a permitted use and as a special use in the Dunwoody Village area. And this is not to say that these facilities could just pull or pull a building permit or a certificate of occupancy and a business license. We're setting new standards with those, that we're asking first for operations plan, what type of licensing is proposed? What type of people will be there? What type of staffing will be there? And then what's the exit plan that's proposed, both for people who graduate out because they've been, they've been successfully treated, but also these types of treatments can be expensive, people who have to leave because of financial reasons, for instance. We're setting, we're setting facility limits or size limits for community residences of five residents. More residents would be allowed through the special land use permit process. They're generally not allowing sex offenders or people on parole or probation with a recite as a specific address. That's what you know as, as a halfway house. This is not what this is. We have several separate requirements for that. And then lastly, recovery communities cannot co-locate in existing apartment communities. So this is, they're not supposed to be a floor in an apartment high-rise or a building in a larger apartment facility. These are standalone facilities. Again, if, if you think nursing home, that gets you generally in the right direction. We've heard, or it resonated about these two different types of facilities at, at the first read. We've heard about an interest in having increased buffers for the larger-type facilities, for the, the recovery communities. The ordinance that's part of your package has those distances increased to one mile. So before it was a half-mile. Now it's one mile for the distance for recovery communities from existing facilities. The same is true for schools. The distance was increased or was doubled from one thousand feet for two thousand feet. And again, this is for the larger type of facility for the recovery communities only. There are no changes in the distance requirements for the, the community residences, which is more your personal care home or a home-type facility. This map, it gets, gets more complex now compared to what y'all have seen at the first read, because it shows both the half-mile distance, and that is the cross-hatched area in the inner circles here. That is a half-mile circle that would be applicable for community residences. And then you have the second, the outer circles, that is the one-mile area for recovery communities as it's proposed in the ordinance. That's part of your package, so this to help visualize what those requirements would be. And just to, to summarize, like, facilities could go into, into those buffered areas. They would just have to obtain a special land use permit. So there would be public notification, and there would be two public hearings in front of the Planning Commission and the City Council. And the same is true for, for the schools. So instead of one buffer, this map now has two buffers. There's the inner darker blue buffer is the one-thousand-foot distance requirement for community residences. The outer lighter blue circles is the two-thousand-foot requirement for recovery communities. So again, there's like, depending on the use intensity and of the, the land use that is proposed, one or the other requirement applies. And again, like with a special land use permit, a facility can go into one of those areas, subject to Planning Commission and City Council review. You'll see more facilities on, on this map. Because we had a conversation around kindergarten-type facilities at the last meeting, and then Councilman Hennigan sent the email over the weekend. So we showed here all kindergarten or all that we found kindergarten facilities as well. I want to emphasize here that we're not adopting any map as part of this. This proposing is a text amendment. The map tries to exemplify what this looks, what these requirements do, but we're not approving a map. How it really would happen is if a facility would come in, in the next few years, they would have to display to us at the time that the conditions that are there, facilities may cease to exist, new facilities may pop up. New kindergarten programs may exist, newer schools may open, schools may close, which impacts those requirements. But we would request this, a survey from a licensed surveyor that shows the distance requirements are met at the time an application is made with us. And but the conversation at the first read and the, the questions about kindergarten programs, it's always if, if the same question comes up multiple times, it, it can be a sign that clarification is needed. And so what we're proposing tonight to is, should y'all wish to approve the text amendment to incorporate these two red sentences here? I've highlighted the, the sections here. I've named the sections that they need to go into. This is not a change sort of in what's, what's proposed. It's just a clarification of what this is intending to regulate. And it clarifies that kindergarten, in fact, is included as part of this term, so that the distance requirement has to be met from any facility that offers any grade between kindergarten and twelve, whether it's kindergarten through fifth, or whether it's just kindergarten, or whether it's a, a high school. So again, no, no policy change, just a clarification that, that, that will be helpful. And again, to summarize, what this is intending to do is, is striking a balance, like where there is a pathway for both small facilities and large facilities in, in the city while preventing clustering, and at the same time maintaining protections and maintaining room for community inputs on most facilities. A proposal also, just from an administrative standpoint, simplifies the code by consolidating several group home categories that we have currently, and by not focusing on the individual group that is there, but by focusing on land use impacts, it makes it easier to administrate for, for the staff. And then this is a second read. Staff recommends approval with, and again, I would ask y'all, should you wish to approve to include this as part of your motion to include these two red sentences? And with this, I'm available for any questions.
Hi, sorry. I'm gonna ask a quick question. There's no applications pending. This is not a rezoning hearing today. This is a rewrite a part of our code.
That's right.
Okay, just making sure people understand that. All right, who has questions? Rob?
I actually want to go ahead and make a motion to approve this revised ordinance, including the clarifications.
Second. Oh, okay. Anybody have just questions or discussion? They still discuss? Okay, that's fine.
Just the, the private schools, private K through twelve schools, I'm just, this is kind of independent of what this is proposed on. I know how we have zoning, and there's use by right, and then there's use via, you know, variance. Say in the Dunwoody Village, right now, in existing, we have a private, I, I don't know what they call it, but it's, there's children there, and they're doing some type of activity. If they have, like, I, I live over by Jet Ferry and, and Mount Vernon in that jet, there, there's not, I don't believe there's that type of activity there. If somebody, a private business, wanted to do something that would trigger, I basically, you know, trying to find out how we find out, and if we have any hooks into, if, do they have to get a, if it, but that doesn't come to council, though, if it's by right, I guess, if they were to go in a former storefront and start doing things that would be classified, that would capture this, is that correct?
So it, it could be. It depends on the, the use and depends on the district. The, how we would get at that. The, how we would get at that, but this is the same as we have for alcohol. Users, um, if you open a liquor store, you have to be distanced a certain distance from specific facilities, including schools. And what we're asking people to do is to provide us a survey that shows that the distance requirement is met. And at the time, a licensed surveyor needs to certify that to us, um, we'll do the same thing here, so we'll we'll ask them to. Demonstrate to us that there isn't anything.
So if somebody, it's it goes both ways then, right? So if somebody has like community residents already existing and they want to put in a. Kindergarten, whatever, but it's not, it's it's out, it's inside that they couldn't do it if it was not outside of, it'd have to be outside of that distance. To put a kindergarten.
Oh, no, no, um, no, someone could open a a school in proximity to this, this is like if it's only triggered if a new. Community residence or a new recovery community comes in, if a new uh kindergarten was to open, they have the full. Full range of the city.
Interesting, interesting, I'm, alright, that's another conversation.
It's it's similar to like a.
Like moving under an airport, you don't get to complain about the airplanes. They they need to do their due diligence, I think that's the best way to explain it. Um, John, did you have anything?
No, no, that's all good.
Oh, Rob.
I'm, I, just a question, looking at the um the buffers that with with this revised ordinance, the buffers from existing facilities. And from schools and knowing where the residential areas are, is there anywhere in the city that's not going to require a slump now?
Yes, get the map.
There are, there are areas that would not require a slump.
Well, actually, I was wrong.
Where where would those be? I I'm just looking at this map.
Regardless of the distances, uh, most of the residential uh zoning requires a slump anyway.
Right.
Or like not multifamily.
Not multifamily.
Correct.
Yeah, there's there's, for instance, um, down in. Um, there's areas like in the 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 Jet Ferry corridor that that do not uh don't fall under a buffer, there's. There's areas in um the very southwest of the city or southeast of the city that that don't fall under a buffer. And that's the larger buffers only for those um, for those recovery community type facilities. The smaller buffer leaves um more of the city.
Uh, the the whole reason I ask this question is because um, to me, this is healthcare. We've been looking at this issue for a year and a half, I would like to get something done. I was happy with the earlier stuff, but I understand the concerns, so I'm willing to to vote for something a little bit more protective. Because pretty much everything is going to come to the council for luck with these new numbers anyway, I mean, there's, when we're when we're having to pick out little teeny. Parts of the community here and there, that tells me that this is pretty restrictive, it's probably more restrictive than I would like, um. But I just think it's important to get something passed, so that's why I'm supporting and and just trying to get this pushed through tonight, thank you.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to clarify, because I I don't think it's, and Paul mentioned it when he was speaking, but I just want to make sure the community understands that the distance doesn't prohibit. A uh community residence or or recovery community from going in those circles. All it does is tradition uh trigger additional um requirements for the slump, and the slump in the residential is going to be required. Anyway, so the the distance is not prohibiting in it, and it's not creating unnecessary hurdles, what it does. Is allows the council, whether current or future councils, additional scrutiny. Of that facility to make sure that it is the right fit for that, where where it's supposed to be going, and and I think the intent is to. Deter or 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 prevent clustering and and having one residential community. That might be single family homes today, turning into, you know. A large number of community residences in one neighborhood, which would which would change the character of that neighborhood, there's no. No one's stating that these facilities do not serve a purpose and and do do good, but it does. It's no longer a family living there, it's in essence a business, uh, and it does change the character of a of a residence, so this of a community or a neighborhood. So that what this does is allows the governing body at the time to review that and scrutinize that and make sure that it doesn't uh. Change the character of a particular neighborhood, so the distances do not prohibit, they just allow for more scrutiny. And you know, so I'm glad to see the the recovery communities uh has been put back at a mile, I would have preferred community residences also. Have been at a mile, again, it doesn't prohibit them, it's just more scrutiny, but um I understand. I I believe I'm in the minority in that, so I'm not going to stand in the way, I think having this um, this change of the code is important.
Okay, I have a couple of um, maybe administrative type questions, one is that. Upon, if this passes tonight or whenever, we have a moratorium. In effect until August twenty fourth, is that correct?
I think thirteenth.
August thirteenth? That's earlier than I thought.
Yeah, I can, I can, I have it somewhere, but it's 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 approximately that.
Cause I I thought we could have, we could defer it for one meeting if we need it to.
Yeah, it's a day, it's a day after the next council meeting.
Oh, it's it's okay, um, and. Yes, I see it, it's on August thirteenth, and I wonder if in order for us to have our house in order. To accept applications, if we need to put an effective date, if we need to either add. I'm, I'm getting dirty looks from the attorney, but if we need to either add time, like say this. This goes into effect on September first or something. Um, you know, some, or, well, we can't do that because we would have to extend the moratorium, which I cannot do because it's. But I could do it at the next meeting if I want it, if we want to, so I think what I'm going to ask is, we have an active motion on the floor, so we'll take a vote. If it doesn't pass, we'll have to extend the moratorium anyway, but if it passes, I think I'd like you to come back. With a recommendation on the moratorium, because I don't want on August fourteenth. For a bunch of applications to come in and you not be ready. Is that, we've ba, we've had mistakes, lots of cities have had mistakes in all kinds of zoning issues in the past, including us. And so if you'll just come back to us at the next council meeting with a recommendation on the moratorium. Just, just, I want to make sure there's enough time, I'm not saying six months, I'm saying it could be two weeks, but I just want to make sure. That we're ready to implement what council approves today, go ahead, Tom. No, no, I don't want to lift the moratorium after this is approved, because I want community development to make sure they're ready. To to evaluate applications with these new standards. But no, it's okay. Cause we have a moratorium till August thirteenth, we don't have to figure this out right now. Okay, and and then my other question was, is everything? In their motion, did they say everything we need it to say? Are there amendments we need to do or anything?
So um, the staff recommended version would be to incorporate these two.
Right, the twenty seven.
To make these two changes in those two specific sections um to incorporate that sentence.
I I think the motion does, but what I heard.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, the motion does, Madam Mayor, I just want to make sure we're clear on one thing, so I asked Richard about the moratorium. I I don't want you making this an effective date, this pass the moratorium date. Because I think that gap would be problematic, and so I don't think September first, if it's August thirteen, when does the moratorium expire?
Thirteenth.
The thirteenth, so this needs to be in effect by the thirteenth, at at least in my opinion.
But we could extend the moratorium even with this pass tonight, if staff does not feel like they're ready to accept applications on the fourteenth. We don't have to discuss that now, because we have two weeks till the meeting.
I'm under impression that staff will be ready because they've been working on this a long time, and I would be cautious.
Eric should affirm it, okay.
I'd be cautious about.
Okay, well, you'll report that back to us on August twelfth. Sorry. Uh, Rob.
I just, I just wanted to clarify, the motion I did make was for the revised ordinance, including the clarifications about kindergartners, that's what I got, kindergarten itself.
Right, and just for everyone to know that, right, it's how we define schools in our code, which is something, yep, there goes Dumwitty. Alright, Stacy seconded it, right, alright, any further questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing none, the motion carries. Alright, I can think I can do the rest, because there are discussion, correct? Alright, uh, Americans with Disability Act Transition Plan Update, Tiffany, WOMAC.
Good evening. See my screen.
Yes.
Hello.
Hello.
Can y'all hear me? Okay, alright, um, good evening, Mayor and Council, I'm here to present a status update on the City of Dumwitty's ADA Transition Plan Update. Alright, okay, is that better? Okay, in summary, the Americans with Disabilities Act of nineteen ninety requires local governments that employ fifty or more individuals. To develop an ADA transition plan. This plan is required to be updated periodically until all accessibility barriers are removed, the original plan was adopted in twenty fifteen. The purpose of an ADA transition plan is to identify physical obstacles in public facilities. That establish steps that will be taken to make these facilities accessible. Additionally, the plan establishes a grievance procedure that provides the contact information for an ADA coordinator. Who is responsible for ensuring the procedure is followed. The city approved the original ADA transition plan in twenty fifteen, which is what has been updated. The major updates included first evaluating the existing pedestrian facilities for ADA compliance and updating our GIS data. Um, these pedestrian facilities encompass sidewalks, crosswalks and ramps. Second, a section called implementation plan was added to the plan, which includes providing a status update on actions the city has taken. And will take to bring the city's facilities into ADA compliance. Third, an ADA coordinator contact information was updated. Since twenty fifteen, the city has made significant progress to bring pedestrian facilities into compliance with ADA. Through the capital program and private development, nineteen miles of new sidewalk have been constructed in the city that meet ADA requirements. And seventy-four sidewalk ramps have been brought into compliance, through our capital projects, we have been able to reduce the percentage of non-compliant ramps. From fifty percent to thirty-seven percent, additionally, the city has removed approximately two thousand sidewalk trip hazards throughout the city. Also, I'd like to point out that all our city's public buildings have been made accessible since our last plan. Additionally, all of our public facilities within our parks are accessible, except for Vernon Oaks Park, which is a natural surface trail in a neighborhood. I would like to highlight how the city will implement our ADA transition plan and bring our facilities throughout the city into ADA compliance. First, we will utilize our five-year capital improvement plan, where each project will address accessibility. Second, we will utilize our five-year paving plan to address sidewalk trip hazards on streets scheduled for paving. Lastly, we will utilize the high-end ring network from our road safety action plan to focus on upgrading existing ramps and sidewalks to ADA standards. Along with marking these crosswalks, these projects are outside of capital projects and the paving plan. Also, if we get specific ADA concerns, we will address them as they are reported. The staff recommends adoption of the updated ADA transition plan, thank you.
Uh, this is discussion questions or comments? John.
Thank you, Tiffany, for the presentation, looking closely at uh some of these streets, I have a question. Um, what's going on in Cotillion? Cotillion has no sidewalks whatsoever from one end to the other, I know it's state maintained, but it's within our city limits, should it or should it not be in this report?
Um, so I believe, I've only been to the city a year, so Michael, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe Cotillion had a path designed for it. And I believe GDOT is working on the top end project, and they're supposed to be incorporating that path into that plan.
So should it be in this project list and the future projects then?
Yes, I I possibly, yes.
I'm just thinking, it's it's.
So overdue.
It's a, it's within our city limits, I understand it's on a state-maintained public access road, but that being said. You can look at the path and you can see it's worn away, it's it's a one of the places that I really wish we had a sidewalk, and again, it's, Michael's behind you if he wants to jump in, but. I just, at some point, what are we doing there? I know we talked to the state, we talked to GDOT. We have a list of all of our projects for ADA capable, you know, projects in the future, and that's not listed.
Yeah, a couple of things on that, one, the this report doesn't necessarily identify places you need a sidewalk. It's more where you have a sidewalk, is it accessible? Um, and then I would say, you know, I think it's something that should be on our radar because it's within the city, but as far as. Um, listing it as one, it's not something we maintain, uh, and you know, it's it's GDOT right of way, they maintain the right of way, so I would say that. Although the city wants to have a sidewalk there and wants it to be accessible, it it shouldn't be on our report as like an asset that we maintain and. Uh, ensure is accessible.
Because we never paved that street anyway, that's always GDOT that paves it.
Right.
If there's stormwater, GDOT does it, if it's a sidewalk, GDOT should do it as well, though it's within our. City limits and our residents are the ones missing that sidewalk.
Right, yeah, the the only thing we maintain on uh Cotillion is the traffic signals.
Alright, thank you, it's the only thing I saw missing in the report, thank you.
Anybody else? Catherine.
This report talks about a form to send in, would we better tell the citizens that C Click Fix? For tripping hazards, et cetera, is the best and easiest way to identify these and get them fixed?
Um, I think yes, but we also have a procedure in a form that will be in the document. Um, it's required in the ADA transition plan to have a procedure for that, so either could work, I feel like.
I had a resident stop me after a council meeting and asked if we monitor every inch of sidewalk we have for these. But I want to suggest to residents that they are out there and can see, should definitely be the ones. Reporting anything they see every time they see it.
Absolutely, the C Click Fix is the right way to report it, um, I will be the ADA coordinator as well, if you want to direct them to me, you could do that as well.
Does that give them bigger priority if they go a different route?
Um, I don't think so, um, just, I'm also a contact, if you, if you want to give it to them.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, John.
If I could follow up on that, as far as reporting, let's say trip hazards on a sidewalk. Um, you mentioned C Click Fix, which is really what the residents know, you mentioned another form that's going to GDOT. If somebody were to file a C Click Fix with us and said this sidewalk is a huge trip hazard. Where are we on that type of stuff? I mean, are we, are we really doing that work in a way which is? Are we, are we doing it in a timely fashion, if, I I'm confused on the two two reporting methods, I guess. I want to make sure that we are doing our due diligence on the C Click Fix, and from time to time, we get a report on how we're doing on C Click Fix. Um, I'm confused on the second reporting, that's might be the official one, so I guess. C C Click Fix not, that does work, right, that does.
It does work, I think the original plan had this grievance procedure, and you're required in the ADA transition plan to have an ADA coordinator. Um, so that's just part of the plan, but the C Click Fix would be the best way to report the issue and. I believe we do like respond, I can get you a response.
Again, if somebody were to report something via C Click Fix and two years goes by and somebody then trips and falls and breaks a leg, the city's. Uh, I'm not a lawyer and I don't plan to be one, but the the city could be responsible for that, because we were put on notice and we were told about it. So I'm just, I want to make sure that we're doing our due diligence on C Click Fix as much as we can, and it sounds like we are.
Yes.
Thank you.
Can jump in and correct me if I'm wrong, this is the way I almost had of CD, is that if there's a problem with the existing infrastructure, C Click Fix is the way to go. But if a res- resident says, hey, we need a new curb cut here because of this reason. C Click Fix isn't going to really be the right vehicle for that, this reporting form might be the better vehicle, is that?
Yes.
Am I reading that right?
Yes.
Just kind of dovetail off of what uh John was mentioning, but let's say we use C Click Fix. Do you flag anything that you deem as an ADA issue, and do you filter that, so can you? Monitor and track open ADA issues on our current built in our in- infrastructure? If we know that things are open, and then is it, do we monitor to that level if we know it's an ADA flagged item? Or is it pretty?
Uh, we, we don't have a way to flag that currently, I I mean, it would, we we would all fall under sidewalk. Um, issues. issues typically. So, you know, we could, we could query how many sidewalk complaints we've got about, you know, broken or uneven sidewalk, but we don't have a specific ADA category.
Right, so, so this grievance process is kind of separate from that. And if somebody files a grievance, that's followed through the ADA.
Yeah, I mean, I think you could report all these types of issues through C Click Fix. As Tiffany said, the form is required as part of the plan, but there's a process for, you know, if somebody feels like they're not getting heard or, you know, something's not getting addressed, then I think the grievance form would be maybe raise it to a higher level, go to the ADA Coordinator is what that's more intended for.
Um, consent? Is everybody okay? Alright, so consent. I get that. Okay, next is Michael Smith. And then Michael, will you do me a favor af- if you can stay for just another minute after the last thing with Patrick Krieg, I want to ask you something in front of everybody. Thank you. Alright.
Okay. Um, at April, at the April twenty-ninth City Council Meeting, um, we presented the concept plan for Happy Hollow. Sidewalks on the west side of Happy Hollow Road. There's already sidewalks on the east side. The, we developed a concept for the entire corridor from Dunwoody Club all the way to Peeler. But the focus for construction prior to paving on Happy Hollow, which is scheduled for 2027, is the segment from Kingsland Court down to Peeler Road, shown circled on the map. This is the area where we talked about there's some stormwater improvements that are needed and there's already some existing sidewalk that we want to connect up. And so the contract amendment that's being presented is to complete the engineering and final construction plans for, for the segment shown here. And just to refresh everyone's memory, the, the proposed concept was for a new six-foot sidewalk on the west side of Happy Hollow, uh, a landscape buffer and then, um, standard on-street bike lanes on both sides. And this is just an overhead view of the section we're talking about. You see that there's a couple of the existing sidewalk segments labeled there. So Practical Design Partners was previously selected through a competitive proposal process to, and we contracted with them at the time to complete the concept design that's shown here. The contract amount was fourteen thousand dollars, so that didn't come to City Council. The, they provided a contract to complete the final design for this segment, which would be an additional one hundred and twenty-six thousand fifty dollars, with a twenty percent contend- or twenty thousand dollar contingency. And so we're recommending to move forward with that contract amendment. If they were to need, if we did need to use all of the contingency, it would be about eleven thousand dollars over what we currently have budgeted in the project. But we're not anticipating using all the contingency. If we do need that money, we can pull it out of Splos reserves or, or add it into the project budget for next year. So we're recommending a approval of the contract for final design.
Um, John?
I'm just a little confused. We go out for an initial bid of four, and then we come back for fourteen thousand dollars. The initial bid was fourteen thousand dollars, we awarded it. And now the amendments for a hundred and twenty-six thousand. How does the amendment get? I just, maybe I don't understand it. Explain it to me. The, the first one, we go out, they win the bid, fourteen thousand dollars, then they come back and they get and ask for an amendment for a hundred and twenty-six thousand. So I'm just, help me understand because it just doesn't look good metrically on paper.
Yeah. The, the original proposals did propose for all of the design for the whole road, but, but the reason we only, and the, and the fourteen thousand was broken out in there for everybody's proposal. They had a line item for concept. And we decided at the time to only move forward with the concept because we didn't know, you know, are we just going to do sidewalk on one side, no bike lanes? Are we going to do bike lanes, which then affects both sides? So it was hard to enter into a contract with somebody not knowing exactly what the final design would be. So that's why we only authorize the concept. And then we went back to them and said, okay, this is what we're actually going to design now, and it includes both sides of the road, which their original proposal did not. And so that's where the, the additional money comes in. But we did evaluate the original proposals based on a cost estimate for the total scope of the project, but, but that cost changed because it's been two years and we changed the potential scope of the project.
Is this legally allowed via the procurement methods or does this need to go out for rebid? Because it seems like it's a large-scale change.
I guess we'd have to talk to the purchasing, but I mean, I know we selected, you know, we don't just select on price, we select it based on qualifications and that's what we selected. Practical design on, they were ten percent lower on their cost at the time than the other one proposer and even lower than the other one. So, they were selected on qualifications, but they were also the lowest cost.
I'll refer to others.
So I think Eric, we need John Gates to let us bless this if it's okay or not. And then also, it wouldn't hurt to include the original bid sheets in the packet agenda next time. Uh, Joe.
So if this goes forward, Michael, this is just the final design. What's, what's estimated? We don't know what, I'll just throw this out, long question. What's estimated construction cost? Is the construction cost in our current five-year budget in Splos? And if so, what year would we be targeting making all this come to fruition?
We'd be targeting doing the sidewalk in 2026 so that we could complete it for paving in 2027.
Okay.
And that.
And the budget and the funding for construction, is that sitting in, and is that an estimated sitting in a bucket right now?
Yeah, there's money allocated for construction, of course, you know, until we do some more design, we don't have a real estimate, but.
And for the stormwater component, are we going to leverage any of the stormwater funds from that?
We could. We, we haven't gotten to that level yet, but that's a, an option.
Right. When you brought this up first time, again, I'm a, I'm kind of like, we talked, it's not in that segment, but we talked about a potential future pedestrian crossing Refuge Island at Fountain Blue. And I would just like to offer to my peers here, if we felt like that maybe, could we put that in part of this? Do, do we have to have, you know, to, to, could, that's not part of this design, the Fountain Blue pedestrian crossing, but.
No, it's further north.
Yeah, it's further north and that's in not, that's a to-be-determined, but could we just maybe, why not have a conversation about, let's get a pedestrian crossing Refuge Island put in there and potentially ask the same person, same added into the scope of their design and, or build? Or do we need to do it? It's, it's not as detailed as putting in a stormwater and a sidewalk to get that one? I guess I want to back into seeing how we could get a pedestrian crossing refuge put in at Fountain Blue.
Yeah, I think, uh, part of the issue there is there, until we build a sidewalk, it wouldn't connect to anything on, on one side. Like, we could put an island in and even put a crosswalk, but it, it wouldn't go to anything on the other side because there's no sidewalk.
It's, it's just crossing Happy Hollow from what, north to south of Fountain Blue. Uh, I'm kind of confused. I'm just seeing people wanting to go on Fountain Blue. There's nothing, right? Across Happy Hollow.
Yeah, I mean, you just, you'd have to basically put them out and, you know, they have to go into the road. I mean, I'm just saying, there's no, the crosswalk wouldn't connect to a sidewalk. He would just end up going into Fountain Blue.
Tom or John, uses your neck of the woods? Do you have any?
Tom was pushing his microphone button, I saw.
Yeah, I was just thinking, like, i- if, if we wanted to do something, that would be better for that to be a standalone project rather than trying to incorporate into this, since they're not necessary, they're in the same area, but they're not geographically connected. It's not a, we might actually be able to do it faster if it was a standalone, uh, project. And I, I know we have, we have done in other areas where there isn't necessarily a sidewalk, but we construct, for lack of a better term, a landing zone, right, where the crosswalk goes to, and we pour a small, you know, maybe ten-foot section of concrete, so there is something to land on, on the other side. But, but to your point, there are not continuous sidewalks on either end of that at, at the current moment. But, but having a safe with the, with the Fountain Blue and the recreation area there, it would, it would be great to have a safer way for those residents across because a lot of people live on the other side of Happy Hollow that are members of Fountain Blue.
And it, and it's also traffic calming.
So you, somebody should put it on a list for the Jonathan. Um, okay. This will not be consent, so just we'll see with the information in a few weeks, if that's okay, if you'll get, just to get with Mr. Gates and all that, and include the bid sheets and stuff. Thank you. Patrick Krieg, welcome to our meeting. Right.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Patrick Krieg. I'm Major with Dunwoody Police Department. I'm here to discuss a grant we have been awarded through the assistance of Richard Plato, our Finance Director. Uh, we have applied for the Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant. This has awarded us a hundred and sixteen thousand eight hundred and forty dollars to adopt a higher rate of electronic vehicles within our fleet. These funds would solely pay for two EV vehicles and outfit them fully for the Dunwoody Police Department. We are not expected to split these fees or reimburse. We will own these vehicles and it will cover all costs.
Anybody have questions? Are they Mustangs? It's listed as a Mustang.
It is, it is.
What, what are they?
I can provide a picture. It is the Mustang Mach-E. Looks very similar to a Mustang with a hatchback or a bit of a station wagon. It is the Ford EV law enforcement model that falls within our budget restrictions.
Okay. Okay.
I, I just want to, my, my wife and I have been test-driving EVs and this is actually a really nice one. This is one that we have been considering. So good job picking up the Ford Mach-E. It's, it, I mean, it just, it's
And we have the charger.
Well-designed vehicle.
Do we, I'm sorry, do we currently have a way to, a charging station for those here other than the, the commercial, like, paid plug-in ones?
The commercial are the only ones we have at this point, and they will be provided with the, the home-style chargers, which would be the slow version. I believe it's eleven hours for the recharge that the officers will have at their home, but they will be using these.
So we'll be using those. Would it be more beneficial to us and more cost-effective to set up a charging station somewhere at City Hall, especially if, if, if the fleet is going to be expanding? I don't know. I mean.
That's something to look into, but we would have to pay for gas if they weren't. So if, if this is cheaper than or equivalent to gas for now, it might be the easiest. But yes, as we get, if we get more EVs, then we would put ours. And I, I guess we could, I mean, I didn't mean to interrupt Eric, but.
You said exactly what I was going to say.
We have to pay, they don't fuel themselves, one way or the other. We don't have.
And this is a test case. We, we will see how these operate and work within our capacity.
So I guess we have to approve that we're taking this award. Can that be on consent? Okay, John, sorry.
Alright, um, electric vehicles. You said you're going to be charging them at the homes, officers' homes.
Yes, sir.
Tell me about that.
So they will have the slow charging system that's provided with the vehicle. They'll plug it into their 120. It will essentially trickle-charge the vehicle. At this point, it looks like it's eleven hours to get a full charge on that. Three hundred miles with the extended battery that's attached to these vehicles. Their primary charging station will be at City Hall.
I just asked because of number one, who's paying the electricity and what policies do we have and who's doing that? And what would happen if a vehicle catches fire in an officer's home? Is the insurance in the city ready to cover and this policy is ready to underwrite all of that? Because those happen. And I was looking, I want to make sure that the city has policies and procedures and reimbursement, and I want to make sure all that's covered as part of this package because those things happen. I just want to make sure the city's aware and that we're ready for that.
Yes, that's a. I'm sorry. They do. So that's a fair statement on the EV piece about the insurance. That will be covered under our policy because that will be insured as that electric vehicle for those pieces. As far as the vehicles, the two are going to be assigned to people that are at City Hall primarily. So their primary charge will be here. They won't have its charge at home for emergency because I don't want to get into where we're having to pay for that, you know, for that power. The city needs to pay for the power for that, so it should be charged completely here at City Hall. If it needs additional charging, we'll pay for it to be charged at a supercharge station, you know, and have a rapid charge put on it.
So, my question is kind of related because a lot of our officers actually live in apartments because they're courtesy officers. Do the apartments have EV chargers now? Some do. Okay. I just don't want to make sure anybody's excluded from having these vehicles if it's something that they're going to want. I'm not real sure yet what the differences are. But, okay, we have it under control. Are we okay with this for consent? Okay. Yes, right, right. We don't want it to, people to come out of their own pocket for electricity. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So this will be on consent. Okay. Public comments? They're out of, I do, well, but I was, okay. Michael Smith, can I ask you a question? Well, I want to thank you first for the summary of the Georgia DOT Managed Lanes email that you sent us all. John triggered something in me, which was the side bite triggered, and something I was remembered, which is the sidewalk on Cotillion. That's, there were lots of residents, and by lots, I mean, not hundreds, but probably a couple of, many, um, from the Madison, which is the condo complex that abuts this project, the managed lanes essentially. And several of them mentioned if they could just have a segment of sidewalk from their driveway to the gas station to be able to walk, actually connect to our new Georgetown Trail. I don't know how much that would cost. I don't even know if GDOT would agree. But could we, would it be appropriate just to ask? I mean, we don't have to put in a path. They just need a five-foot sidewalk or something until the, when GDOT, they claim, yes, now, because they're, they have elderly residents who do something temporary now. Uh, you know, it's in front of, it would be in front of one of their buildings, in front of McDonald's, in the side of the gas station to get to the sidewalk on Shambly Dunwoody Road so they could connect to the trail. It would give, I mean, we know, like John said, that people are walking on this and we, we probably, I mean, we weighed it because we thought this project was going to be built. Well, we don't know really what we thought, but they kept saying it was going to be built sooner than later, which leads me to, so I don't know. You can talk to Eric about whether it's appropriate to even just bridge it. We would have to probably pay for it. They're going to pay for the trail.
Yes, yeah, I think we would have to pay for it.
I don't know how much that would cost.
We can, we can look and see how much it would cost, but they would probably say you pay for it and then, you know, we'll tear it out and build the new one.
Right, they said they're going to build the new one. They told me that at the meeting. I know that there's some, you were having some debates and that's okay. The other part of this is, is that there's a chance when I, when I, at the me, at the public meetings last week, what was missing was something I had seen before, which was a phasing of this project, which the first phase was going to be the completion of four hundred and then the T, a small T that maybe didn't even come to Shambly Dunwoody. I can't remember. And it wasn't there and the project manager made inferences that the staging is going to change. Potentially, she was very, very coy. But my sense is, is that it may be changing, maybe dramatically, which might surprise me because I do think they want to finish the four hundred part. But if it changes and they go to either end to start Cobb or what's the other one, like the cab, but way, way down into cab. Right, um, it's past that now, but anyway, I feel like we ought to talk about the infrastructure improvements we were going to do on Cotillion all those years ago, because if they start way far away from us, it could be ten to twenty years before they ever get to us. And, and so that, I just want to share that with Council. And then the Peachtree Industrial Part, which is the, really the most important on that whole list of things we need them to adjust. We need to, you know, it's going to come down to who gets, allegedly who gets the project. But I would like our lobbyist to figure out how to get in the governor's ear, maybe, to, to help us bridge it. There's some, the project team is like, well, they'll love it because it'll get more cars, which will bring more revenue, but we can't tell them to do it. And we really need them to do this. I think, um, I have spoken to the mayors. I think, um, I have spoken to the mayors of Peachtree Corners and I'll circle back with them again. And maybe our lobbyists can help us get in the right person's ear. But that's the, that's the one thing. I mean, everything else is really important, but that's really, really, really important.
Yeah, yeah, I think probably sometime in the next month or so, we probably should talk about a follow-up letter to GDOT or even a meeting with elected official.
So sh- um, the project manager said that they would come and talk to us after the public input processes over, that they're not allowed to talk to individual, John knows all the federals probably, but they're not allowed to talk to individuals or, like, elected officials or local governments because it could be seen as favoring one over the other until this process is finished. But yes, we, and I think we need our own presentation like we've had in the past. So, okay. Sorry. Thank you for staying, Michael. We said that public comments, as far as I can tell, there is no public city manager comments. And you, no executive session, right? Counsel comments, anyone? By the time we meet again, as sad as it is, I believe school will have started. I don't know anybody, I guess Rob is the only one of us up here that will have a child left in K through twelve school. And that starts soon, right? August something. August fifth, so okay. Right, so drive carefully, people. Right, drive carefully. Alright, I need a motion to adjourn. Sue move by Catherine. Second by Rob. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous.